Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, my name is Mike Castro and so I was born in New York, but I grew up in St. Petersburg, Florida. My parents moved to Florida when I was a young kid in grammar school and been in Florida, you know, basically my whole life except when I was in the Air Force. So I went to high school in Florida, then graduated and went to the United States Air Force Academy, as Mike knows. I graduated in 1988 and had a 24-year career in the military, retired as a full Colonel in 2012. Had a lot of very, you know, interesting and unique jobs. I wound up working for both President Bushes at different, in different capacities. I was a NATO senior commander in Germany and then went downrange to Iraq and Afghanistan multiple times and some other places. Got to go back to the Air Force Academy almost 20 years through the day after graduating and be the first graduate base commander, which, you know, that was a huge honor. And just had a lot of other interesting jobs, the Pentagon and whatnot. What brought me to Naples is two of the bases that I was a senior commander at, base commander, had large hospitals and hospitals that were in, you know, I don't want to say turmoil, but, you know, the commander I replaced, you know, I sort of say sometimes, you know, they didn't get a gold watch on exit. I'm not saying they didn't do a great job or whatever, but the day I got there, both generals of both of those bases where I was a senior leader sat me down and said, "Most base commanders don't spend much time in the hospital. You're not that base commander." And so, you know, you worry about billions of dollars of aircraft you have on the flight line. And in the case of Eglin Air Force Base up in the Panhandle, that's a 725 square mile base. It's the largest military installation in the Department of Defense. A lot of people don't know that. And that's because we do a lot of classified things there, live weapons testing. But also it's a huge medical center, way bigger than Physicians Regional. And so, you know, there was a couple of inspections, you know, just like civilian hospitals, you got to pass inspections and all that and hadn't done very well. There was also a big construction project that was sort of dragging, a joint project with the VA. So I got a lot of hospital administrator experience there. I was given a lot of latitude and responsibility by the commander who wanted to see a leader take over in the hospital and thought I was that person, you know, that's the reason I was brought in there. And then when I went to the Air Force Academy, that hospital is not gigantic, but it has a very unique mission, as you know, because you have the cadets there, you have a lot of retirees in Colorado Springs. And at the time, a very large medical center was built in Colorado Springs. And so, the Air Force Academy's hospital had been inpatient, had delivered babies, had done all these things over the years. It really wasn't cost-effective anymore. So in record time, and there again, it sort of was something that should have been done sooner than later. They wanted to convert a lot of the inpatient facilities to outpatient type of services. Still have some inpatient beds and whatnot, but find a better balance, quadruple the size of the pharmacy because we were going to be the main pharmacy for, call it a joint pharmacy for all the services all throughout Colorado Springs. And that stuff just needed to be done. And so, I was really empowered as a hospital administration leader to move out some of the people that maybe were trained administrators, but maybe hadn't done all that much and, you know, and overhaul the hospital. That's how I got to Naples because there was people that were in a very similar circle of friends that I had that were sort of following my Air Force career, some people that knew me from a private military high school that I went to in St. Petersburg. It's called the Adam Fergie Academy. It's a, you know, I say it's a prestigious high school. We had two grads that walked on the moon. It's the only high school to do that, Alan Shepard and Charlie Duke. And so, I was, you know, every once in a while, I was always in a newsletter, you know, with a picture of President Bush or, "Hey, I'm back at the academy." And, you know, we just won a big award from the Secretary of the Air Force for what we did with the hospital and all that. And I got a call out of the blue from Health Management Associates, which is the company that used to own Physicians Regional, from Bill Schoen, who still lives here in Port Royal and owned the company. He owned both Physicians Regionals and about 130 hospitals across the country. And at the time, I was considering concluding my military service. I don't say retire. And I had visits all over the state of Florida, one with then-Governor Scott, at the Disney Corporation, a few other places. And Mr. Schoen asked me, "Can you add a couple of days to your trip? I'd like you to come down here and tell you about our company. We're going to put you up in Hilton. We're going to take you to dinner at Shula's. And even if you've decided to do something else, I'd like a fresh set of your eyes to look at my two hospitals here because you're going to find they're the prettiest hospitals you've ever seen, but they're low performers." You know, they were like two-star hospitals if you rounded up. There was a lot of issues. They had gotten rid of a lot of senior leadership. And so, I came here and one of the reasons why I took the job, it wasn't the most lucrative, but Mr. Schoen was someone that really offered me a career path, not just a job. He was a Marine, you know, I'll say former Marine, but always a Marine. And I just liked the way he sort of talked about his family, not his employees, the path he had for me. He linked me up with several people that would be in my chain of command above and below me that I was very impressed with. And I really wasn't just looking for the highest-paying job. And I also liked the challenge, you know, in the military. I had sort of made a name for myself and my team of taking over, you know, places that maybe needed a little polish and needed some, you know, leadership and whatnot. And I felt like the transition of the hospital here from my military civilian career would be not as big of a jump. I mean, I looked at the hospital as sort of a mini military base, you know, it had employees, it has food service, it has security, you know, it's not just where they do operations. So the transition was pretty seamless. And then, he did speak about things like Leadership Collier and all that. So I could tell they had put a lot of thought. And I never filled out an application. I never had a job interview. I basically sat in their office in Naples and he said, "Well, what we'd have to do to convince you to come here?" And, you know, that, what I liked about that is, hadn't even done anything yet and already I had credibility, latitude, support. And so, I took the job and literally within a couple of weeks, I was still on active duty. I was on terminal leave and I came here and started out Physicians Regional. The big shocker was about a year later, there was a hostile takeover by a company out of Tennessee, CHS, Community Health Systems. And I remember I reached out to Mr. Schoen and he sort of laughed and he says, "Oh, someone's trying to buy my company." Every day, someone's trying to buy my company. And his exact quote was, "You know how many planets would have to line up in order for somebody to like pull this company out of my hands?" And the planets lined up. I still stayed for four more years about. I mean, you know, it wasn't that I all of a sudden just ran, but CHS was trying to move around former HMA people, sort of out of state into different hospitals and whatnot. And I had moved so much in the military, I really felt like I had a home here. And previously, HMA's plan for me was start as the COO at Collier. They hired me as a CEO, but start as the COO at Collier, then maybe I would have moved to the hospital in Pine Ridge, and then they would have pulled me probably to the corporate office in Naples. So it wasn't like I was going to run around every 18 months. CHS, that was more of their plan. And I had a really, a strong relationship with Val Hospice at the time, the chairman of their board, and still the chairman of their board lives on Marco. And so, I had known him because I live on Marco and known him through some business deals. And, you know, and he knew I was a little bit sort of, not frustrated, but I wouldn't have taken a recruitment probably from CHS as quickly as I did from HMA. They wound up doing away with a lot of the COO positions at CHS because they were losing a lot of money. After they paid for HMA, their stock dropped significantly. And so, they offered me a big severance package. I took it and literally the next day, I became a senior leader at Val Hospice and gave them a year of time. I mean, I knew I wasn't there to replace Jason Roa or be the CEO. I made that very clear. But they had a veterans' program they were trying to launch. I think they also, you know, according to their board members, they wanted a fresh set of eyes to look at some healthcare things and some fundraising things and whatnot. So I felt like I made a big difference in a year. And then after I left there, I ramped up my consulting company that had always had a few clients and, which was about half healthcare, 25% businesses, small mom and pop and big things, and about 25%, kind of weird government, military things. And so, that's sort of my, you know, my story of how I came to Naples. Then, you know, maybe the follow-on is, why am I running for county commissioner?
That actually is. It's like you know. So what did, sort of spur prompted you to run?
So it wasn't something that was like in my top 10, "Oh, let me wait till Donna Fiala retires and I'm going to jump in." But I got a call in August from a senior Naples business leader, a name you would know immediately even by the first name, I'll just say that. And there had been a dinner in Naples with some Marco people and some Naples people, as I understand it. And the topic of conversation was that Commissioner Fiala had decided to retire after 20 years. And immediately, people jumped in the race who probably were, you know, maybe had some inside information. And these senior business leaders and prominent citizens who had met, you know, my name, I guess, was one of the topics of discussion that, you know, they weren't that impressed by the opponents who jumped in. They might be great guys, but that they realized, you know, Collier County is a $2 billion county. I mean, I'm not telling you guys anything you don't know, but, you know, maybe 20 years ago, it was a great sort of retirement job, or if you met well, you know, you could sort of be a county commissioner. But now, it's a big job with a lot of heavy lifting. And I know all the, all the county commissioners, to include Donna, and I know the other four, two are attorneys and two are owners of their own company. And so, these are, you know, prominent people that have a lot of business sense and whatnot. And so, their pitch to me was, this is an opportunity to get a peer in the seat and not a subordinate. And they looked at the opponents that were initially in the race as, you know, good guys that had a lot to learn and maybe they would, you know, you know, give it their best shot kind of thing. But on day one, they couldn't step in with deep business experience and the kind of things that I had. And I had worked a bit with Congressman Rooney and Governor, and now Senator Scott, mostly on being a senior veteran advisor. Helped them with their Air Force Academy selections. And Senator Scott, I hear from him fairly frequently, you know, or through his staff about, you know, just advice on military things and whatnot. And people sort of knew that. And also, just my community work, you know, in the community. I mean, even though I live on Marco, I mean, I consider all of Collier County a place that I have a lot of footprints and fingerprints. And so, when I told the group, I was in, I was in St. Pete at the time. My mom had taken a bad fall. And so, I said, "This isn't the time necessarily to talk with me." But the one thing I learned from strong Italian parents and from a great, you know, military career, same as Mike would attest to, is when people you respect ask you to do something, I'm not saying you automatically do it, but you don't think about it for five seconds and then say no for selfish reasons. So I came back here. I called Bob Rommel, who's a close friend of mine. He said, "Oh, you definitely should do this." He says, "There's guys that run for Congress and Senate that don't have the resume that you have." And then he called Byron Donalds, who's somebody else that's an acquaintance. I'm not saying these are like personal friends, but we've played golf. We've met for dinner. And they met me the next day at Mercado and we talked for several hours about, should I run, why I should run, putting a team together, you know, not just putting up a website and go, "I'm a candidate," but really putting a strategy together, you know, military strategy, making this an operation. We're either all in or all out. And then, the group of people that had called me came over my house then a few days later and we talked a bit more. And just the more I thought about it, I, you know, I guess it's just, you know, maybe some good values my parents instilled in me, the desire to continue to serve as a public servant, you know. And I don't say that to be sort of like, you know, tongue-in-cheek or corny or anything like that. But I really had voices in my head of people that I had, who had mentored me over the years, some who had passed. And I thought, you know what, this isn't something that was like on my list to do. It wasn't that it wasn't, but it's in front of me now. This is the resume I bring to the table. I do know I'm more qualified than the opponents that are in the race. And most importantly, this is my county as well. I'm not here to pass through. I'm not here to be a county commissioner so I can really run for governor or something. And I commonly get asked, "Why would you run for county commissioner? You're totally overqualified." And the answer I say to that is, "Wouldn't you love to live in a county that had five overqualified county commissioners?" And then I use my healthcare background and say, "Mike, you're coming to my hospital to get your appendix taken out. Tell me, do you want that overqualified surgeon or the underqualified one?" So I don't have visions of grandeur of doing something, you know, out and about. I bought a home on Marco. My son graduated from FGCU and I'm enjoying working with Van Ellison at St. Matthew's House and with the Wounded Warriors and all the things I'm involved in here. I'm a member of the Rotary Club, American Legion, VFW. But I just feel like, you know, a lot of people I really respect think my community could use me. And then, the more that I thought about it, and I thought about it for a while, and at the time, Commissioner Fiala was sort of blowing up my phone from Ohio. She was on vacation. "You have to file. You have to file." I since found out she was sort of encouraging everybody who thought they should run the county. So I wasn't special anymore. But my reply back to her is, "Donna, you actually don't know me as well as you think because if I decide to run, I won't file." And then I just put a period and I waited for her reply. And then she sent me this long reply about how filing works and how you have to talk to Jennifer Edwards. And I said, "Donna, if I decide to run, I won't file. I'll launch." And so, we took a few days. I put a team together and whatnot. And, you know, I mean, I backed away from every business interest I have. I basically ended all the contracts with my consulting company. I've been running full-time every single day and I'll be a full-time county commissioner. And, you know, I just, I know what I can bring to the position and I don't want to sit on my couch and have somebody that I think is less experienced, less qualified to run a $2 billion, you know, county and sort of learn on the job. And if I thought there was a candidate in the race, I'd be having fundraisers for them. And I mean that sincerely. And I'm not saying that they're bad people. And something that I say sometimes that people take the wrong way is, I look at all the opponents that are in the race and some who have since dropped out, and I know they really want to be county commissioners. And I'd love them to be county commissioners, just not ours. And so, you know, I'm all in and, you know, learned a lot from Leadership Collier and from the Chamber and lots of other things. And so, that's why I sit here now today before you.
Yeah. Well, it definitely sounds like you're passionate about Collier County. So if you had to pick one, what do you think is the sort of most important, most pressing issue the county's going to face in the next five years? And if you're lucky enough to be elected, what will you do as one of five?
Yeah. Well, you know, and I've gotten that question before. One of the things I do say is, it's easy to list the top five issues.
Right.
The harder part is, have you ever solved those before? And do you have the experience and qualifications to do it? We can go to Lately High School right now and interview the valedictorian. I guarantee you, they would say, "Oh, what's the top problem?" Or, "What's the top five?" Housing, environment, overcrowding, traffic, workforce housing, healthcare. And that's sort of the easy part. And that's why I look at some opponents who are in this race and even others, and they can spout off that list quickly. But have they ever done it? Have they ever signed a $100 million contract? I have. Have they ever worked with the EPA when it comes to red tide? I have. I mean, I was a commander at Eglin Air Force Base and we had red tide and it wasn't something that we invented. When I get that question, and I got it from the Naples Area Board of Realtors, who I respect quite a bit, they sent a really, what I thought was a very deep dive questionnaire to us. And actually, I'm going to leave you with a takeaway with some things I answered that you might be interested in, especially from their questionnaire, which I thought was very astute and eloquent and whatnot. I use the term overcrowding as the number one problem. And the reason I use a little bit of that generic term is because it encompasses a lot of other things. So when you talk about overcrowding, you're also talking about proper housing. And so, the whole issue with, you know, workforce housing, I don't like to use that term because I think that the connotation with workforce housing is low-income housing. And that's not what we're talking about. I guarantee I'm the only person in this race that has hired thousands of people and hundreds of people here in Collier County and people that wound up taking the job and then turning it down because they couldn't find housing. I've offered jobs to surgeons and nurses who said, "Oh, my God, great. I can't wait to work at Physicians Regional. I'm going to go get a realtor." And then they came back six days later and said, "It wouldn't be financially feasible to move my family here from Birmingham, Alabama," that sort of thing. And I think having that expertise. And so, also, when I say overcrowding, it's beaches. And when beaches are overcrowded, then the environment is affected. Then, you know, if more people are on the beach, need better beach restoration. If the beach is empty, you don't need as much beach restoration. And so, you know, I like that term because it covers so many things. And this is not a one-dimensional county. You know, example I used in one of the debates is just the traffic issues here. A lot of development is talked about, whether it's Naples One, you know, the triangle or several other things. And commonly, our public servants will say, "Oh, we can shoehorn that piece of property in there." You know, "We looked at the algorithm for traffic and the roads that are around that area already are underutilized so they could absorb more of the traffic." And what I would tell you that I learned at my bases, some really big bases, is the algorithm is great, but at times, it's not reality. So the example I'll give you is, have you ever been on a green arrow, you know, to turn green? The algorithm might say 23 cars should make it. The number that actually makes it is a single digit. It's seven or eight. And it's because you have tourists here. They don't know where they're going. They're playing on their phones. They're older people. They're driving slow. There's 30 feet in between each car. So you have to look realistically at this community and not just sort of, you know, use the algorithms and get, you know, direction from the quote "experts." You have to take that in. But then, I think, you have to bring experience and qualifications to the table to be able to make informed decisions. The District One County Commissioner needs to have two things in that seat, and that's credibility. And they have to be able to have influence with the other four commissioners. I've heard some of my opponents say their job is to fight for District One. If that's their number-one focus and whatever their number-one thing is, they will lose most votes, one to four. And the reason that is, is because I think the job of the county commissioner in District One is to know the priorities. So, you know, overcrowding is what I just talked about. And that encompasses a lot of things, housing, environment, traffic, managed growth. But also too, I hear that from people running in this race and others. And then my question to them is, have you ever managed growth? Have you built 4,000 houses? Have you ever built roads? Have you ever, you know, built giant runways at your base? And before you lay any amount of concrete down, actually, the first thing you do is the utilities in the sewer, in the water. Around here, sometimes they see us doing things backwards. We build the Taj Mahal and then we realize the roads around it, the algorithm was wrong. So now, all of a sudden, you have 2,000 people living in a new community and they're all exiting that community on one lane because there's orange cones everywhere because we realize now we have to widen the road. But being able to have credibility and being able to have influence with the other four commissioners is how you bring amazing things to District One. Because you need their votes. I can bang on tables and scream for stuff for District One. Even Commissioner Fiala told me at lunch one time, she sometimes does get disappointed that she loses a lot of votes that would have helped District One, but the other commissioners, you know, didn't support her. And it might be that you have to explain it better. It might be that you have to take a calculator and actually do the numbers and be influential to be able to present, you know, the issue. And that's a big part of being a county commissioner. So if I think overpopulation, overgrowth, managed growth, all the things that I think fall under that umbrella are important, they're also not just important to District One. It's important to all of Collier County. The more I campaign, the more I realize there's a lot of people that actually don't know what district they live in, or they don't realize that after the election, the District One County Commissioner will vote on everything in every district. I have voters that come up to me frequently and say, "Oh, I don't live in District One. You don't need to talk to me." And I say, "Um, maybe, but I actually would like to talk with you because the day the election's over, when I win, I don't, it doesn't matter what district you live in, I will have the exact same vote as whoever is your county commissioner." And I'm really surprised that it's a larger number than I would have expected that don't know that. And so, that's part of the education piece. But I think just being able to have a sense of this community and what it takes to manage the growth. You know, I know a lot of your board of directors. I know a lot of the developers. I know a lot of the realtors. I also know a lot of the business people, from Mom and Pop to Ryan Hold at Art Rex to Paul Hiltz, who's become a very close friend of mine at NCH and who I've worked with on several things, you know, during COVID. His son actually recently graduated from the Air Force Academy too. So that's how we sort of connected. But I think having those relationships, it doesn't skew my thought on voting or anything like that, but it gives me a lot more information and a lot more stuff in my tool bag, as we always say in the Air Force. I know to make much more informed decisions and much more common sense decisions with experience and qualifications to push and support what I think the number-one things are.
Yeah, for sure. You mentioned as part of that overcrowding, a couple of our really big priorities, one of which is housing. We often hear from our employers, our members, that housing is the top issue, like you said, with Physicians Regional, which you experienced. They would come in, they'd accept jobs and then realize the market wasn't there. What role do you think the county, the county commission, the county government has in sort of encouraging housing that is affordable for our workforce? So sort of that gap housing, those people?
Everything.
Yeah.
Everything.
And what would you do? Like sort of what would you see?
So I had a marathon breakfast with several people, but just the other day with Rich Ivanovich, who's an attorney who represents a lot of the developers. And I really respect what he says at the podium. When he, I go to, first of all, I go to every county commissioner meeting and have since September. You're running full-time, even during COVID, when some of my opponents were at home watching it on the laptop, the one thing we learned in the military is when the bullets start flying, you run towards the bullets, not away. You know, that's part of being a public servant. And I think sitting in there, you get a much better sense than watching it on TV as to personalities, you know, if a million-dollar attorney, whether it's Rich or somebody else, and I don't know that he makes a million dollars, but I think at times to the developers, he's probably worth it. But the conversation I had with him, and to be quite honest, you know, I think the best way for him to represent his employer is to be pitching ideas and proposals to county commissioners who can digest and understand it. If the five county commissioners are the people that least understand development, housing that's affordable, the environment and those sort of things, and I'm not saying that they're not educated, but if they don't have deep experience in those areas, I think then people at the podium are sort of directing the traffic a little bit more. And then also too, and I see this happen in the county commissioner meetings, they don't ask deep-dive questions. So you ask 30 questions about the three palm trees that are going to separate the parking lot and the other community, but really, the questions are on page 233 where the numbers are. And so, when it comes to housing that's affordable, like I said, I've offered jobs to people at the hospital and even had a vow. And then it turned out, you know, they felt like they couldn't live here. I think the, I think the answer is several areas, okay? Number one, some people say, "Oh, everybody think," you know, there's some people that think the answer is Habitat for Humanity. That's not the answer. And I've spent an entire day with Lisa, who's the CEO of Habitat for Humanity. We drove around in her own van and she showed me actually all the things that they have. I was very impressed. We drove in some areas and the crappiest housing in some of those neighborhoods wasn't Habitat for, it was some of the nicest things. And now, they've also have different designs, you know, they're really thinking out of the box. So that might be a piece of it. Now, does that help a surgeon or a nurse? No. I mean, that's helping a lower-income family who lives here and gets them out of a poverty situation. There's also a misnomer that these people are all given houses and they're not. They're subsidized, but they make a payment. They earn the house. There's also, you know, misconception that it attracts people from outside the county. And according to Lisa, every key that they've handed out has been to somebody who was already a Collier County resident. But one of the things that I see, and either it's Rich Ivanovich or anybody that's representing the developers, that I think is underutilized, is when we build something amazing in this community, whether it's a, you know, Tarachina, or not Tarachina Graham, we'll just say Verona Walk or Allure is a new development that's going up near Livingston. I think it's about 363 units and whatnot. I don't think it's mandatory that there always has to be an affordable housing piece in there, but it's definitely worth the conversation. And the reason I think that is the best way to, it's not the only way, but it is a big way to help tighten the spigot a little bit, or maybe open the spigot a bit on housing that's affordable, is because you're going to build something amazing on Livingston, something that's going to be beautiful and it's going to, you know, be high-quality and whatnot. So then, fencing maybe 50 or 60 or whenever the magic number is of those units for the workforce. And they're living in the same quality-type building in the same beautiful area, but they're getting a little bit of a subsidized rate. Now, one of the things that I want to make sure is those 50 units aren't all facing the garbage cans. They're not lower quality. They have the same fixtures. Maybe they're a little bit smaller. Maybe there's some other things. Because also too, the developer can't lose money. So what I always tell developers is, it has to be 51% good or more for the county. And you have to feel like it's 51% good or more for you. So we both feel like it's a win-win. But you don't want anybody driving by Allure and saying, "Boy, that really looks terrible." And then that developer takes a hit, while they didn't put in an affordable housing piece and they easily could have. They put it in the wrong spot. The roads aren't wide enough. There's too much congestion. You know, there's been a lot of big safety issues. So that's why I think it's more of a team approach. But I like that idea of in some developments, working in at least the conversation of an affordable, it doesn't make sense in everything. And there'll be some developers that'll say, "You know what? Because of density and because of the other permitting things that I'm under, I'm not able to do that." Or to give an affordable piece, that obviously cuts into the numbers, so I need more density. Maybe I need another two stories or I need, you know, the footprint needs to be bigger. But you need people that can understand those type of things. And oftentimes, in the discussions, I don't hear those questions always being asked as aggressively. And I know that's what I would bring to the table. But I think between that, supporting smart Habitat for Humanity, you know, type things to make sure, because that is part of our housing piece, and then other things, competition. I could name and you could name right now the three big developers that seem to build everything in town. I can tell you, when I built 4,000 houses on my base or we laid out the runway or whatever, you know, we put that thing out on the street for a while. I mean, I want, I want a dozen different competitors to come in. And even though I know two or three of them, or maybe the more favored ones, there's no guarantee they're going to get it. And I think just making sure there's competition, you know, the county recently advertised the Golden Gate Golf Course project. They put it out on the street around Thanksgiving. So that was sort of dead time. Then you had Christmas. And then, the first people to come to the podium was in early or mid-January. Even the own county commissioner said, you know, "Maybe the reason why we only have two people making bids is maybe we didn't advertise it for enough time." Maybe, maybe not. But I wouldn't be in such a big rush when you're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars. Project Nabore asked me the question about fast-tracking things. I like to quality-track stuff, not fast-track it. I mean, it's one thing if there's a war and I need to build a runway in Afghanistan to land airplanes to save lives, then we're going to fast-track that thing. But here, it needs to be more of smart-tracking, quality-tracking. And, you know, I don't know that I've ever signed $100 million contracts for anything that only had two bids. You know this from the military, you know, it comes back a lot of times from the four-star general or even from the healthcare system saying, "Try again." You know, these aren't bad options, but I have nothing to compare them to. So you can't look at me as a county commissioner and go, "We think A is so-so and B is even so-so. Pick the one that's the least bad." I don't think that's good for the county. And so, I think to get the kind of quality housing we need here that can be affordable for blue collar, workforce housing and whatnot, takes a lot of different parts of the puzzle, people who understand it and several different options to fulfill it. But one of the things I've also said is, I'd rather see nothing built on a piece of property than the wrong thing. Because you build the wrong thing, it's like the pyramids. It'll be there for 1,000 years and everybody will drive by and say, "Who were the stupid county commissioners that approved it? And who's the builder that built it?" And we're not trying to make builders look bad. And we're not trying to bring something to the county that's less than high-quality and also something that is going to help solve a problem, not just be beautiful apartments that a lot of out-of-towners are going to come in and rent or buy. That's not horrible, but then don't pat yourself on the back saying, "We just did some amazing affordable housing thing for our local workforce" because that's not what we just built over there. So those are the, those are some of the ideas and some of the things. And I've talked with the actual people. I met with Brian Stock recently from Stock Development, Fred Prashishkin, who's one of the big builders in town. You know, these are people that I want to You know, these are people that I want to hear what they have to say. What kind of frustrations or challenges or ideas do they have to bring to the community? You know, Todd Yates is somebody that I've had conversations with. And I'm not sitting here name dropping. But I think as a county commissioner, you have to know who these people are. I'm I'm not exchanging Christmas cards with them. But knowing their business mentality, how can we get them to build something that's amazing and have it be incredible for the county? Or maybe, you know, they've been trying to do that, but they've run into some roadblocks. I mean, you know, I've heard some things from Reinhold at Art Rex. And I can tell you, any any town in the world would kill to have an Art Rex. Yet he has some frustrations over some really basic things that aren't supporting at times a business that we should be bending over backwards for. Not breaking rules or anything. But I think um having a sense of urgency, so he can get back to the business at hand, which is doing amazing um orthopedic and medical type things and putting the Naples stamp on it every single time. And I think he's looking for that as well, not, you know, any kind of special treatment, but just not the runaround. You know, and so, you know, that's the business piece. And same for developers.
You meant Art Rex. Art Rex is a great example of how we've diversified our economy. So much of this economy here is based on tourism, hospitality industries. What do you think the county should be doing to, and as a county commissioner, what would you do to help uh diversify our economy? And what steps would you take? What to?
Well, I think you have to look at the businesses that want to relocate here and not just say, oh, they bought a piece of property and they're going to build another fifty storage units. And so we're going to be the capital for storage units and Wawa's. I'm not saying gas stations aren't important and storage units aren't important. I said at one of the debates, my biggest um shock with the storage units um here is uh, and Mike knows this from moving around in the military. There's storage units in every every community, and we need them here. I've just never seen them on um prime real estate and on main drags. I mean, if I want to put my couch in storage for five years when I'm in the Air Force, I drive down the street, around the corner, down four more streets, through the industrial area, through all the places that repair cars. And then I go to the storage unit. I put it in my couch. I lock the door. And then I go back in three or five years to get it when I move. And so giving up prime real estate, and some of that is that, you know, a lot of times people will blame the city or the county commissioners. And that's not fair either because those tracts of land are permitted for uh general use or whatnot. But some of that permitting is dated. That's another thing I think as county commissioners, we have to look at and go, it's not the nineteen seventies anymore. Tammy and Emmy Trail doesn't have um horse and buggies going down it anymore. And it's a dirt road. This community has grown exponentially. It's the largest growing county in all of um Florida, and it's got a two billion dollar budget for twenty twenty-one. We need some smart thinking. And, you know, just as everybody keeps talking about managed growth, um managed leadership in in our our county and looking at those um different permitting things to not necessarily prevent certain things to be in a certain area, but to um to uh fan the flame of diversification. So it's not like somebody can just come in here and build a cash cow that's a storage unit, plop it down in the middle of something. Because I guarantee you, if I want to build an Ocean Prime restaurant or some amazing two thousand unit um high-end type thing, I'm not building it across from a Wawa and a and a and a storage unit. And so sometimes when you put those things in areas that are, that could be like Fifth Avenue like, or they're they're sort of like the high rent district, or just very visible, pretty areas of Naples that we don't have an infinite up supply of, you can sort of kill a corner with with um too many convenience stores and too many things. And so I think that's that's the managing the growth part. Sometimes the county commissioners' hands are tied because of of what that land is permitted for. And so they may not want another, you know, racetrack gas station, but because there's some things that are dated. So I think I'm taking a look at that. And I know it's might be easier said than done, but I'd like to hear more conversations about it. But being able to um attract business here is how you get diversified. If alls we are is the tourism place, um, you know, the hotel place, um, you're not going to attract more Art Rexes. You know, Reinhold was the one that I think fell in love with Naples. And also too, by his own admission, if you read articles, and I've talked with him as well, he felt like this was going to be a very business friendly um community to him personally. I think it has been friendly, but by his own admission in the paper too, I think sometimes he's he's one example of people, of a person who has brought an amazing thing to Naples and does bang his head against the wall. And he literally could lift up his entire operation and move it anywhere and for a lot cheaper. So I think being um, being open to to business and also making sure we're bringing in a diversified type of bit. And that's where the Chamber comes in. You know, if you have a strong Chamber of Commerce that is uh business focused, but is also tourism focused, environment focused, which you you all are. And it's, I've I've been, you know, twenty-four years in the military. And when you're a base commander, the first person that you link with is the mayor. The second person you meet like an hour later needs to be the president of the Chamber of Commerce, you know. Um, and so I always made a a a rule of that and be very involved. Because you want to know what they know and you want to be able to have, you know, that sort of shared relationship. And I think we have a that great like relationship here. Um, it's changed over time, but I think it's um improved and matured. But being able to attract that, um, you know, those diversified businesses. I also think businesses that are here already that are successful are our best advertisement. I don't want to see on the front page of the Naples News that Reinhold's upset about anything. I don't want to see Paul Hiltz or Van Ellison, you know, people will say St. Matthew's House, oh, that's a not-for-profit. Okay, that's a twenty million dollar company that's in the heart of my district, District One. I'm going to be very supportive of St. Matthew's House, not only for the incredible work that they do because I'm very partial to, um, they help a lot of veterans. They help homeless people. I mean, the mi- their mission is something that is, you know, on my shortlist of things I'm really passionate about. But but they also are an employer. They also have a a large footprint. They also um uh bring tax dollars and money and revenue and different things and in different ways as a not-for-profit. Same with David Lawrence Center. You know, Scott Burgess is another person that I really respect. And I think when you have those, um, I guess the term would be at a mall anchor stores um in your community saying great and wonderful things, that's how you attract bigger and better things because they want to be part of that overall community. So you have to take care of the customers of the business people you have currently before you can expect to be attracting um people that are just as good or better. And so that would be my focus as a um county commissioner. And also to work with the Chamber to make sure we're doing everything at the county level to support you to do that. I mean, I I would expect that's your mission and your mantra, but you know, you can't do it in a vacuum um by yourself. And I and I I believe we can do better. That's another reason why I'm running. Because I just think, you know, I I don't want to sound like a broken record, but it it takes experience and qualifications and someone that's already done some of that. I'm not saying I don't have a lot to learn. But I think on day one, it won't be my day one. Um, so.
Great. Well, I think that's all the questions we had, so.
Yeah. If anybody's listening, I love the Naples, the Great Naples Chamber. And I like your rebranding by Greater Naples Chamber. Um, I think that's great. Um, you know, and I'm not here to make a a paid commercial. I I did um reread a lot of things that y'all put out, you know. Sure. Some of the, and and where that have been put out that really helped us. You know, some of my focus as a as a commissioner is, some of these things are a bit dated. You know, I'm reading the Collier County Needs Assessment, which is extremely valuable, at least the one that I printed out was from twenty seventeen. And I realize all these things can't be done every six months. It's been a very busy time and whatnot. But, you know, these are products that summarize um the things that have been found in our community, the things that could be brought to our community. And I think as a county commissioner, I have some homework assignments to make sure that these things get updated, that um that we get supported as uh businesses, as citizens. And in the end, that the taxpayers get their money's worth. You know, one of my, one of my big platforms is knowing how to spend taxpayer dollars. You learn that definitely in the military, but even in a for-profit hospital and not wasting it. I mean, I'm shocked you didn't ask me about the sales tax because that's another one that I'm really passionate about. People ask me all the time, would you have supported the one percent sales tax? And the first thing I say is, um, well, it's already been passed, so um you're you're asking me to replant that ground. But I would tell you, before I would have voted for it, I would have asked a couple of questions. Number one, do we need the one percent sales tax because we mismanaged a bunch of money? So we have a delta and we need to sort of make up for it? Or do we have a list of so many amazing things that we can do with beaches and parks and roads and grounds that that four hundred and ninety million that we think we we would get in over seven years is going to do more than four hundred and ninety million worth of great work for Collier County? Right. Now, reading all the history of the vote, and I I know that the Chamber strongly supported it. Everything that I've read, if that's what I would have heard as a county commissioner, I would have supported it. But then that's not where the homework assignment stops. Now, the current county commissioners have to make sure that we take that four hundred and ninety million and get a hundred and four uh uh uh, you know, a hundred and four million or whatever it is, um, at other, you know, what, a thousand uh 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 times more impact with the money. And that's, that's where I think um you've got to watch the money as well. And so I don't want to take four hundred and ninety million of of any of citizens' dollars and then waste it. You know, at the end of seven years, I'd like to be able to say, wow, look what we did with the four ninety. You know, we 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 have eight hundred million of investment in Collier County. We have things we never would have even dreamed of. Did it, did it really affect anyone? Did somebody, you know, or is somebody sleeping under a bridge because of that one percent sale tax? But shame on us if we get halfway through maybe the use of that money and don't have a lot to show for it. And you know what? That's on the county commissioner's inbox. A lot of other people as well, but as the county commissioners, that's, you know, if you vote for something, then you have to make sure it's spent wisely. And I I also believe you have to have the experience to know what to look for, the questions to ask, and you have to own a calculator. You know, I said in my very first interview to the Naples Daily News, it takes more than heart to be a county commissioner. And I, one of my opponents who's no longer in the race jumped on that and said, oh, he's the commissioner with heart and heart, heart. And then I said at the first debate, I would expect all the opponents up here, regardless of their resume, have heart, care about people, aren't trying to make the water dirtier, or the housing um worse, or the businesses not as diverse. But in the end, heart's not the part of your body that does math. And so when Stock Development, Todd Gates, Rich Ivanovich, or outside contractors come up to pitch, you know, something in the hundreds of millions, or we're going to figure out how to spend four hundred and ninety million. Yeah, heart cares about the people, but you better have knowledge and experience. And um, you know, the part of your body that does that is 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 more than heart. And so that's another reason why I'm running is um, I think giving back to your community is what local politics is about. But um if you don't have something to give back, and this is going to be the biggest job you ever had times a hundred, I don't want you to be my county commissioner.
Great.
So.
Well, thanks, Rick.